Meeting to order is 9:00 a.m. and I would like to have all the supervisors introduce themselves now. District one?
District one, Patrice Horstman, present from afar down in Phoenix. But it's good to be with you all on a Friday morning.
District two?
Good morning, everyone. Erona Mavasquez, Supervisor, District two. Thank you for being here today.
District three?
Good morning, everybody. Adam Hess, District three. Let's get it going.
Good morning again. Judy Begay, District four Supervisor, current Chair of the Board. District five? Okay. At this time, we have an action item and the presentation, discussion, consideration, and possible action to canvass the July 30th primary election results in Coquenino County and the transmittal of the results to the Arizona Secretary of State. I had the county manager.
Thank you, Chair Begay, members of the board. This is Andy Bertelson, County Manager. And here today, we have Esler Musta, our Elections Director, as well as Patty Hanson, our Recorder, and Whitney as well with the Elections Office. So without further ado, and Donna's here. Hi, Donna. Donna will start it off. Okay, Donna, with the Recorder's Office will get us started today. So thank you so much.
If I may, County Manager, you know, it's really exciting. This is the first time I've seen we've got our new management team here before the board.
Thank you, Supervisor, Vice Chair Horstman. If we weren't nervous before, we definitely are now. So.
It's good to see you and Deputy County Managers. I think you might want to introduce them, but you know, Erica and Kim, it's great to see you. Thank you. And I see we've got Lucinda in the audience. We've got everybody there.
We are all here and present and accounted for and happy to be here on a Friday. We have Erica Philpott here, our Deputy County Manager, as well as Kim Muselman, our Deputy County Manager, and Lucinda Andriani, Deputy County Manager, Flood Control District Administrator, Esler Musta, Elections Director, and Assistant County Manager. And so Jen Hammond is here. And so thanks. So we will, Cory's here and Brian. And so we will have a lot of time with you today after the canvassing of the elections to talk about the expenditure limitation. So a lot of preparation has gone into that, and we're very excited to visit with the Board on the expenditure limitation later today. So thank you.
Whoever's at the podium, I cannot hear at all.
Oh, okay. It was not on. I am the Chief Deputy Recorder, Donna Kazner, and I will be here today to present on behalf of Patty Hanson, the Recorder, our portion of the canvas for the July 30th primary election. And the Recorder's Office covers voter registration, early voting, and processing of the provisional ballots. So we're going to start with that. And just some statistics that are interesting for this election. The total registered voters was 84,351. And then the total voter turnout was 26,335. And that's a percent turnout of 31%. And that's actually about average, believe it or not, for a primary election. We were right on target for that. We issued 45,045 early ballots. Now, that's how many went out in the mail or voters voted in person early. And out of those, 21,404 were actually returned, voted, and counted. And so, and the percent of total votes that voted early as opposed to going to the polls was 81%. So that's some of, some interesting statistics. So for total voter registration, for the primary this year, we had 84,351 total registered voters, as you can see from the general in 2020 and then the primary in 2022, which was our highest. It has gone down, a decrease of 8,637 registered voters. Now, that is pretty normal for the fact that it's been two years since a general election. People aren't quite thinking about updating the registration yet, but they will be in the next couple of months, and we do expect that to go up again for the general election. So the decrease is mostly due to people moving, not updating their address yet, or moving out of the county. And this is just a political party breakdown in our county of registered voters. As you can see, we do have the most is Democratic, but then we have a large portion of unaffiliated voters, and those are voters that did not designate a party or said that they were independent. And then Republicans. And then we also have a few smaller parties that were just recognized again, Green Party, and then the No Labels Party, which is a brand-new party for this year. And then also, we have Libertarian, and they have been recognized for a while. So the primary election voter turnout, like I said, you can see kind of the trend is about 20% to 30%. So 31% is kind of right on target for a primary election. Now, this, this report is in your packet. This is the voter turnout by party registration. It's kind of interesting because you can see the breakdown of the turnout by party. Registered Democrats and Republicans were kind of neck and neck with 42%. But then you can see like the unaffiliated voters had a much lower turnout, and that's pretty normal for a primary election. And then you can also see what's kind of interesting is the party ballot that unaffiliated voters selected, because they did have to choose which party ballot they voted. And 47% of them chose a Democratic ballot and 50% chose a Republican ballot. And then they also had the choice of just voting for their city or town measures and candidates if the city or town was having a separate nonpartisan election. So 72 voters chose that ballot. And then also, the method of voting again, the election day and then early, like we said before. So on Election Day, there was 18% turnout of the total, and then early was 81%. Trying to get rid of this little box here. Oh. Okay, let's find out where we were at here. Okay, so we are at the early voting report, and this is also in your packet. This basically breaks down every, everything about the early ballots that we issued. So we had 45,045 total early ballots issued. And keep in mind that those ballots issued, if you were on the active early voter list, you automatically got mailed a ballot. So it wasn't just voters who necessarily requested or even wanted to vote in this election. If they're on that early ballot list, they automatically get mailed a ballot. And then, so out of that, 21,404 actually voted and returned that ballot. And out of those, or I'm sorry, the, in addition to those, there were 223 that returned their ballot, but it was rejected. And then I have the rejected reason breakdown here. And this is a pretty normal percent of the total. It's unfortunate, but some ballots, they are returned with their signature missing or their signature is different from what we have on file. We check every single signature with what we have on file, or it was signed by someone else. Now, in all of those cases, we do make multiple attempts to reach the voter, ask them what happened, see if they can cure the situation. But out of those, we still had 35 that their signature was missing, 15 were signed by someone else, 33 the signature was different, and we couldn't cure it. And then we had 23 voters who went to the polls on Election Day, but they had already turned in an early ballot. So in that case, we do have a system where we hold the early ballots that are turned in very late. And by late, I mean like right before the election, and they aren't marked as an early voter in the poll pad for the poll worker to see. So those we polled, and out of those 23, we had to poll because they already voted at the polls. Now, they didn't get to vote twice, but they attempted to. And then we had one that it was an empty envelope when they mailed back but without a ballot inside. And then we always have some that are just, they come too late. We had 116 that were received too late. And then the total ballots undeliverable by the post office. This is actually a very normal number as well because election mail is not forwardable. So it comes back to us if somebody has moved, if they have a forwarding order on their mail. So 1,013 of the 45,045 that were sent out got returned to us. And then just some other early voting statistics. We have the ballots issued and counted, and the percent of those was 47.52%. The turnout, again, I think you've seen this a few times in these slides, but the turnout that were early ballots out of the total was 81%. And then Election Day voters made up 19%. And we compare that to the general of 2022, and as you can see, it's trending about the same way. And then this is kind of an interesting breakdown, how early voters actually returned their ballots once they were mailed to them. If they returned it by USPS mail, that was 10,975 of the total. 8,126 returned in a ballot drop box. So our drop boxes are very popular. We have them all across the county. Election Day polling place, so these voters actually waited until Election Day and dropped off their early ballot at a polling place. That was 1,115. The Election Day drive-up drop-off, that goes on on Election Day at our Recorder's Office in the parking lot. We had 463 voters drive through our parking lot, and we had staff outside to accept their ballot, so they didn't even have to get out of the car. In-person early voting sites, so we have early voting sites around the county, and 456 early voters went in person and voted there at an early voting site. 204 voters dropped off their early ballot that they had already voted at an early voting site. 66 voters voted at a mobile site, and our mobile sites are on the tribal nations across the county, in Tuba City, Cameron, et cetera. We have a list on another slide. So 66 of those voters voted at a mobile site. And then Yuakava is our uniformed and overseas citizens voters, and they are allowed to vote via a secure online portal. We had 66 voters vote that way. And then we had 28 who dropped off their early ballot at one of those mobile sites. And then this is kind of a visual of the number of ballots dropped off in each of our drop boxes. So as you can see, the Cherry Avenue drop box, that's right outside our Recorder's Office, so that is the most popular. Also, the King Street drop box, that's where Health and Human Services is. Those two have been around for years, so voters are very familiar with those drop boxes, and they utilize them frequently. But also, like the Fort Valley drop box, that's where community development is, that's a pretty popular one as well. But all of them around the county got over 100 ballots dropped off this time. And then this was our mobile sites on the tribal nations. So as you can see, they're not quite as busy this time around. This is the number of ballots either dropped off or voted at each of those sites. Most of the time, we only get to each site one day out of the early voting period. So that's kind of why they're a little bit lower, but we do expect for the general election, they will ramp up quite a bit. And then this report is also in your packet. This is the provisional and conditional ballots report. A provisional ballot is issued to a voter on Election Day if there's either something wrong with the registration or there's any question where it needs to come back to our office to be verified that they are eligible to vote. The total number of provisionals that were issued was 214. Out of those 119 were able to be counted, and then 95 were not counted for various reasons. And it, it's kind of on par that not registered was the highest reason for the provisionals not to be counted. And we really try to get people to register and know that they need to register before they vote. But thankfully, the provisional form that they filled out when they were there will allow them to be registered for the general now, so they won't have that problem again. And then there's just a sprinkling of other reasons, but mostly, we're trying to get those not registered to vote. And then this is just a breakdown of the activity in each of our Recorder's Offices. So the downtown office, where we, where our Recorder's Office is, we had 129 in-person voters. And then 134 voters chose to walk in and drop off the ballot at our counter instead of at the drop box outside. So we do break down those statistics as well. And then the Flagstaff Mall Office, we partner with the Treasurer's Office to have that location, and we had 76 in-person voters for that. And then we also have our Tuba City Office renamed the Alta-Edison Native American Outreach Center in honor of Alta, and we had 183 in-person voters out there. It is a very popular place for the Tuba City community to vote. And then we also have other early voting sites outside of Flagstaff. So we have Page City Hall, Sedona City Hall, Williams City Hall, and then the Grand Canyon Schools Office to kind of take care of the Tucson and Grand Canyon area, and then the Fredonia Town Hall. And normally, we at least get a few voters in Fredonia, but it wasn't a popular place to go this time around. They also had an Election Day polling place where there were voters. And then this is just some pictures of our county Recorder's Team. There's a picture of our drive-up drop-off in our parking lot, and then some training on the reservation, and then also our mobile sites out there as well. And as you might know, Patty is a Bulldog fan, so she had to put in a picture of a Bulldog on a hot day as it was in July. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you for the report. And are there any Board members that have any questions at this time? Go ahead, Supervisor Hess.
It's probably not to you, but registration, when is the cutoff for them to register?
October 7th for the general election.
Thank you. I think that's important for them to know.
Yeah, I appreciate getting the word out for that.
Supervisor Horstman?
Yes, hi, and thank you so much for the report. And I just want to thank you, everyone from the County Recorder's Office and, of course, our Elections for a great job. It was really well handled. I heard of no problems, and it's just wonderful to see another shining example of Coquenino County of holding our citizens' right to vote. And so I just want to thank you and your staff and also Elections for all the great work in getting this done. And, you know, very interesting to see how our early ballots and our mail-in ballots still are so popular here in Coquenino County. And also the drop boxes. I've certainly used the drop box there on Cherry Avenue. I know many people do. And, you know, love the fact that on Election Day, you have drive-up people, drive-up and have people from your office there to collect the ballots. So again, just making it as easy as we can for our citizens to get out and vote. So thank you again, and thanks for this report.
Thank you. I also want to say that you have 2002 all the way to 2024 election voter turnout. Whoa, it's really increasing. As of last, 2022, we had 92,988 from 60,000. And then now, we have 84,351. I just want to thank everyone out there that has made this possible, because our voice and our election is something that we can, you know, we have to have and, you know, to voice our concerns, issues, whatever it may be, elections, whatever it may be. Those are, that's the reason why. And I know there's a lot of people that are still going to go out again, so I just want to say thank you for them, you know, going out and getting more voters to vote and be a voice. Thank you. Supervisor?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for all the hard work and all the volunteers that were out there that put in the work to make this happen, because that's a lot of folks that voted and a lot of folks that logistics it takes to make this an accurate election. So thank you. This is the bedrock of our democracy, and we need to make sure that it continues to go right. So thank you for doing a great job.
Thank you. Any comments by the Administration? Mr. Bertelson, County Manager?
Thank you, Chair Begay, members of the Board. I think we saw Patty Hanson herself at the drop-off location here on Cherry, and so that's, that's just a contribution from everybody all throughout our, our system. And Donna, I think we can all sort of relate to that last picture of this needing an ice bath every once in a while, so, so well done. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, next.
Good morning. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Board. Thank you very much again for holding this special session today to canvass our election results. Very grateful for the, for the special session so we can meet our statutory requirements and deadlines. I'm Esler Musta, I'm the Elections Director with Coquenino County, and here to present and complement some of the information that Donna shared with all of you. But before I do that, I want to just recognize several of the people that are here in the audience and both in person and virtually attending the canvas of the election. I think online, we have the chairs of the political parties, as well as in the audience, we have all our team from the Elections Department, because this is the coronation and the major milestone for all the hard work that everybody has put in. Just, it's, it's a tough act to follow the Recorder's Office, but I'll do my best. Just to kind of give a little bit more context, I'll skip some of the repetitive information. But one of the things I wanted to like point out in terms of the primary election and some of the challenges or headwinds that we faced early on was the primary election date moved in, at the beginning of 2024, from August to July. And that presented like, again, a couple of challenges in terms of like voter education outreach to make sure that voters had the correct information. And that cascaded not only just to the voters, but also for the candidate filing. The county has an active role in the candidate filing process with the, with the members and candidates that are going to be on the ballot for county offices. And also, it required tighter coordination with the city and towns in order to make sure that ballot measures and candidacies were laid out and, and laid out correctly and were on the ballot. And doing all of this in, in a primary election that has a, is one of the most complex set of rules with open primaries for the two major political parties, as well as very specific rules and closed primaries for the Libertarian and the Green Party, but also the No Label Party had a court decision that did not allow any candidates. So a lot of moving pieces, a lot of different reiteration and things to watch and to be mindful of. And, and again, like, I think it was Vice Chair Horstman that mentioned that we had a very successful election. There were no, no issues to report. There's always room for, for improvement and, and for revising our processes. This is, again, very similar to the, the information that Donna Kazner from the Recorder's Office shared. This is the primary elections, the votes cast percentages for all the different political parties, and we, the voter turnout was 31.22%. I wanted to put that in a little bit of a perspective in terms of our, our average primary election voter turnout versus the state average voter turnout. And I'm glad to say that you, we have the, you know, the primary data here since 2012, and we beat the average voter turnout of the state even this year by, by a little bit more than half, 1 point, 1% point. And that, again, it's very much in trend with what we've seen, but also, I think it's, it's kind of telling that the voters in our county are very engaged and very much take voting and elections too hard and participate. The other graph that I wanted to share that I think is also telling is voter turnout by age group, and these are, the bottom four bars show the, in, in the teal color, show the, the number of voters that actually cast the ballot versus the potential that is in the brown county colors.
Esler, I am, I'm so sorry to interrupt, but I am getting text messages from people who are trying to get on to the Board meeting, and it says the YouTube link that is on the website is not working, and it says that there are six folks waiting to get on. And so if... so if you, if we can have the tech take a look and see what's going on and why people aren't able to get on to this meeting. I certainly did on my link, but apparently the YouTube link is not working. Sorry about that, Essler. I'm really sorry.
No worries. We will check on it. I'm getting a thumbs up from our clerk, so. And again, just to reiterate here, so those age groups from 18 to 54, like in this election, participated at 20% rate. 55-plus participated at a 60% rate. So again, not unusual, not unique, but just a data set and a data point to be mindful of. Early voting, and Donna mentioned this, is the most popular and has been the steady performer for the ways that voters cast the ballot in our county. These two maps are kind of the inversion maps that Holly Roth helped me illustrate here, but it's the breakdown of all the precincts in the county. The one on the map on the left of the screen there has the percentage of early ballots received by precincts. So when you see those darker shades of blue, that early voting was a higher percentage of voters returning the ballot that way. And then the map on the right side of the screen illustrates those precincts that had more, in darker blue, had more voters that cast the ballot in person. And you can see, again, the distribution and the importance of having polling locations in our Native American communities, because historically, those communities have seen the Election Day as a meeting, as a meeting ground and place. The other thing I wanted to talk about briefly in terms of having and why we consider the election to be very successful is to talk about the vote centers and polling places. All our polling places opened on time. The first voter checked in at Tubus City Vote Center at 6:00 AM when the polls opened, and the last voter checked in at Flagstaff Subaru, which is also a vote center, at 7:02 PM. We had connectivity and visibility to all our polling locations, which is very important for, again, the process of checking in voters and also for security purposes. And our average wait time throughout the day was less than less than a minute. The other key indicator for us in terms of kind of the implementation of the vote centers, and this was very important for this election, was the utilization of the vote centers in terms of voters that are assigned to those, precincts that are assigned to those vote centers versus out of precincts. And you can see that the real estate that the Flagstaff Downtown Library owns is very popular. It provides a lot of flexibility that, again, that teal color bar shows that a lot of voters took advantage of voting where it was convenient for them on Election Day. And then it goes down from there. But we were expecting the Flagstaff Library to be a popular spot for its location, NAU, the Flagstaff Subaru, the East Flagstaff Library, the Aquaplex, and then it goes down from there. Another indicator, and this is not just one measure that is important, but it's also a legal requirement, is the use of the accessible voting equipment that provides not only ADA access for voters, but also in our county provides language access in Hopi, Navajo, as well as in Spanish. And this chart, again, shows the total, the breakdown of percentages of utilization of those voting, accessible voting equipment. There's a picture of our Express Vote that illustrates what that voting equipment, but it has a headset and it has a Braille keyboard for people that need audio and visual assistance. And the grouping here, again, is very, is what we would expect and what we've been tracking for quite some times, that in our Native American communities, for, be it for the, again, ADA that, or language assistance, there are those polling locations and vote centers utilize a higher number of accessible voting equipment data. One of the things I wanted to mention, and again, because of the change in the, in the date of the primary election and us wanting to make sure that the voters had the information, we really stepped up our communications with the voters about the day changes and used the very various avenues of communication from the citizen reports that the county published back in, back in early, early spring or late spring, and also the sample ballots and different paid media advertisements in different languages. And the novelty for this cycle for us was, we did develop with the Clean Elections Commission, a video that was played before every movie at the Harkins Theater here in Flagstaff, notifying people of the day change of the primary election date being in July. And that was a new avenue altogether for us to entertain and to implement. Unfortunately, we didn't get as much of data back from Harkins. We were hoping to do a survey of, see the traction that that particular method of communication had. We weren't able to do that, but again, a different avenue and important in its own right. The key, the key to our communication with voters has been more on the, in terms of getting feedback, has been more of being in front of community events. And we've attended several this year. This picture here is from the Navo Voter Coalition Conference that happened at the Twin Arrows early in June. And we were able to not only have our information there, but also bring the equipment along. So first-time voters or elderly voters had the ability to experience what Election Day experience would be like and familiarize themselves with with that, with the equipment as well. Staffing and training, it takes a lot of people to put elections together. And 95% of them are paid volunteers that we have. 338 election board workers were trained, recruited, and deployed on Election Day. We had 38 polling locations, so 38 bipartisan boards that served voters at polling places. And I want to acknowledge the tremendous help that we get and support with the Election Day technicians that run the equipment. We had 75 of them from over 15 county departments, and also from the City of Flagstaff and NAU. And again, these, the training and staffing of poll locations is a pretty major task in ensuring that voters have the right information and can, are able to participate on Election Day. And I want to call out with the City of Flagstaff, they have made a change in their policy and are strongly encouraging, through their leadership, their team to participate and help with elections, which again, is a tremendous help in having the quality and people and attention to detail. The logistics plan, like, went very, very smooth. I think the plan that we built and staffing and equipment, equipping all the polling places was also with an eye towards the November general election. So if you went and voted in person, you probably saw like an overabundance of voting booths set up at polling places. But that was for us to test out that what we expect to be significantly fairly easy, like a tripling of the voters that we saw in the, in the primary election, and also work out any issues and forecast them for the upcoming November general election. I want to, I want to play a video, and I'll actually step from the podium and stop sharing here for a second. We did put together a video, because I think logistics doesn't always quite get to the excitement and all the work that goes behind the scenes. And Nico was going to play a video for us, like, very quickly here. And if he's not available, I can, I can do it. All right. Well, let me, let me go back and stop the share real quick. And I can kind of, kind of play the, annotate the video a little bit, but this is activities that happen at our warehouse over a 48-hour period. So all the setup, all the cages that are being built that you see on the split screens are activities that are happening in that 48-hour. And they have to be precise. They have to be accounted for in order for all the polling locations and vote centers to get the right ballots, the right forms, the right change of custody. That is a pretty significant, a pretty significant undertaking. I don't think the video is doing justice to this, but we will put this video on the, on our shared drive and also mail it, email it to the board and for the public to see. But again, you can see, like, fast-tracked, like, some of the activities that are happening at the warehouse in that 48-hour window. Going back to the presentation, I just have a couple more points I wanted to highlight.
You know, and I apologize again for interrupting, but I am again getting text messages that the Zoom link apparently is working, but folks are waiting on the YouTube link that's posted on our website in Agenda. So I think it's important that we get the technical difficulties so that those out there that want to attend the board meeting virtually are able to do it. Again, I'm so sorry, Essler. Really appreciate your presentation. So I hate to keep interrupting.
So if there's people that want to join virtually, I recommend they join via the Zoom link, which is also on the county website where the Agenda is, because the YouTube stream is down right now. So they'll need to join the Zoom link, which is also there on the website and the Agenda.
Is there any way to let people know that, that are waiting on YouTube?
We can put something on the website that, again, the YouTube stream is down. So they'll need to just join via the Zoom link. We'll put a note on there.
Thanks, Lindsay.
And then a couple more slides, and I'll, we'll wrap up. We did bring our canvassing documents. It's a 1,400-page document that, I'm sorry for all the extra weight on your note or on your binders this morning, but it is, it is important to kind of note, tabulation has been one of the issues that people have discussed and bring, from time to time, bring questions to us about. But tabulation happened, happens by three bipartisan boards at our election center, and we were able to complete the tabulate 99, over 99% of the ballots that were cast in our county by the Friday after the election day, which is a pretty significant and good, good number to reach. And we're hoping that for the general election, we can be in that 90-plus percent range on Friday after the election. The accuracy of the tabulation system is also one of the issues that has been brought up. And we are lucky, in partnership with our political parties, we have hand-count audit boards that come in within 24 hours after the election and complete a hand audit of selected batches of the ballots that have been tabulated. And I'm happy to report, and it's also included in the canvas, that those hand boards found no discrepancy between the equipment tabulation and the hand audit. And also, the other thing to point out is that everything that we do at our election center is with transparency as its primary and most important goal. We have not only the online cameras, but we had party observers that were credentialed from the Democratic Party that were credentialed at the election center. And we are expecting and anticipate to have even more observers for the, for the general, for the general election. So again, like I said, this picture is from our State Logic and Accuracy test that we did before the election started and before we started tabulating ballots. But what we're going to do next is, we're going to transmit the canvas reports to the Secretary of State, both in the packages that you see here, but also electronically. And then the state is going to do their own audits and make sure that they can compile their statewide canvas of the election for Thursday. And luckily for us, the voters made pretty significant statements. There were no races to be recounted for this, for this election. Again, like, I'm lucky to be standing here in front of you and doing this presentation, but like, all the kudos and accolades go to the, to the staff and to the people that make this effort possible. And I want to acknowledge with me Juusak, Margaret Fanado, Holly Roth, Stan Pierce, Lindell Custodio, Denise Anderson, Todd Hare, and also our fellows from the Secretary of State, Christian Gilwood, Emily Malaney, and Damon Marsniko, for their outstanding work and extra hours and, and most of all, their care for our voters in Coconial County. I think I kind of talked enough about our election center and kind of feedback. It's been like very positive, but also the partnership that we have with our Recorders Office. It's, we're joined, and we can't do the work without each other. The Sheriff's Office, IT, Emergency Management, Public Works Facilities. Definitely want to point out, from the kind of key partners in other departments, TLO Myers in the Sheriff's Office, Deputy County Attorney Ending, and Communications Director Ron Dazo, as well as Steve Peru, that has been tremendous help and support in all the activities that we're doing. So with that said, I will be happy to get any feedback. I don't know that I fixed the YouTube link, but I can take any questions or feedback from the board.
Thank you, Essler and your crew. Thank you so much for all the hard work you've been doing. And I just want to say that it shows that, you know, there's transparency, it's very secured. And, you know, with that big office space there, you know, it is really something that to go through there to really make sure that, you know, there is, everything is taken care of and is safe. Okay. So with that, I wanted to ask any of the board members if you have any comments. Supervisor Horstman?
Yes, thanks. And as I said before, but I'll say it to you since you're up there, Essler. First of all, you did not fix the YouTube. You're a magic man, but you didn't get that done. But I want to thank you and your great team. Again, what, it was an excellent primary election, and an example of when we're all working together, what we can get Again, what it was an excellent primary election and an example of when we're all working together, what we can get done for our community. So thank you and your team. And a, and a special shout out to those 338 election workers, the volunteers that came forward. I know a lot of those were county staff and county employees and certainly appreciate them going above and beyond for our community and to ensure our, our voting rights. So thank you. Thank to all the volunteers. And I know you probably, probably need to start doing a plug for getting workers and volunteers for the general election coming up because that's going to be a big lift and one that our community can be part of and part of ensuring, ensuring our democracy and our right to vote. So you may want to give a plug on that at, at some point too, Essler.
Thank you Supervisor Horstman. Supervisor Hess?
Yes, thank you Chair. Just want to say big, big props for getting this all done. This is not easy. As everyone's already stated, the numbers you guys did in the Recorder's Office, the numbers you guys put together and the elections team. I think the biggest thing we have to do from the status, from the, from all the information is education on the dates. I think you, you hit it on the head when you were talking about the date change did impact us. I think the dates for when they need to register and then when they can get in and when they got to send that early ballot, seeing that there's a big chunk of people, I think we got to really push to make sure they understand that. Obviously 80% of the people do, but those, those people that don't, I think we just got to try to get out there and, and push that. Staffing and volunteering, we'd hit on that. I just want to say that's an amazing lift. Watching the video was more impactful than you think. It was, if, if you've ever been to that warehouse, it's full. And for you guys to move it out and get it out there, the logistics involved with that heavy lifting literally is, is impressive. And, and that's something that I know you take pride in making sure that it's safe and sound and accurate. So I really applaud that. And then, yeah, the volunteering and training, I think, yeah, get that out there. Give that plug at the end and tell the people how they can get involved and what the training entails. Because I think people, if they understand what it takes, it's that big, what it, what, what is this? So maybe we can push that out. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Hess. Supervisor Voskus?
Yeah, just again, thank you. Good job. It was really cool to see from the warehouse, the live feed and what the video. And to know that that's available for those folks that do have questions or wondering, they can live stream it and see it as it's going through. And that's really important because, you know, we pride ourselves in, in making sure that these elections are secure and fair. All this data, it's quite impressive. I was running through it and it was like, wow, you know, you break it down to minutia and, and that's necessary so that we know who's, who's involved and where these votes are coming from. And so again, thank you to your, to you and your team and all the volunteers that made this happen because it was a, a team effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from administration?
Well, I believe Essler will probably talk about election poll workers and the need for election poll workers, but for the people, by the people. And, and we, the people, the elections group puts on the elections on behalf of Coconino County. And it's clear that we have one of the best election processes in the state. And I would say we compare nationally to that. So thank you so much to the Recorder's Office, to the elections team, to everyone involved. And we need more people involved in the process to ensure that our democratic systems and our democratic processes remain strong and remain healthy as they are here in Coconino County. So please, if you have a, on November 5th, if you don't have any other commitments, please consider working the election. So I stole your plug, Essler, but just want to stress the need for that as well. So thank you.
And I'll just echo what County Manager Burleson said, that we do need people and we take pride in having local elections run by local people in the local communities, be it in Fredonia, Williams, Kybab, State West, Blue Ridge, here in Flagstaff. So we take pride of, of recruiting people that are actively engaged in these processes and want to learn more and see and experience what it takes firsthand. So thank you very much for the feedback. And I appreciate your voting for the canvas and, and if you have any other questions.
Yes, I just want to say thank you to the staff again, Essler, your staff, and then Donna for making the presentation. I really, we greatly appreciate that, you know, so we're very proud of you as a team. Thank you so much. Okay. Next item on the agenda is discussion regarding the permanent base adjustment to the county's expenditure limit. County manager?
Madam?
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, would you like to take a vote that we?
We need to canvass.
Okay. So right now, we need to make, do a motion.
Madam Chair, if I may?
There to make a motion.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. It is my great pleasure and honor to be part of this Board of Supervisors for this motion. And that is to canvass the July 30th primary election results and transmit these results to the Arizona Secretary of State's office.
Your second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Voskus. All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Okay. So the next item for discussion is a permanent base adjustment to the county expenditure limit. County manager?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. And if you don't mind, I would recommend at least a five minute break to allow us to transition, get our presentations go up and running. We have some partners as well. So just want to make sure we're connected and transitioning from the, the elections item into expenditure limitation.
Okay, five minute break.
Thank you. No, not.
Lindsay? Okay, County Manager, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Chair Begay, members of the Board of Supervisors. We're happy to be here today to talk about our expenditure limitation, planning and programming, the permanent base adjustment to the county's expenditure limit. This is a study session that we are having today. And this will be on the ballot on the November 5th, 2024 election. Our team, and we'll, we'll introduce everyone here in a bit, is on track to meet the statutory timeline for ballot measures and is making good progress on executing a strong voter information program. In terms of our partners, we want to introduce three people who are supporting the county team with meeting our statutory requirements and contributing to our voter information program. One is with us, I believe two are online and they are presenting at a key governmental finance conference, the Government Finance Association Conference is taking place right now. Which Sarah Mulaney is there as well as one of our partners, Alan McGuire, but I believe he's on, online with us as well. And Andrew McGuire is there as well. First, Andrew McGuire with Gus Rosenfeld is serving as our outside legal counsel in concert with the county attorney. And note that Bill Ring, our county attorney, is here, as is Heather Moser with our county attorney's office in our civil division is here. Also, we have Alan McGuire, not related to Andrew and in fact spelled a bit differently, their last names. But he's also been supporting us for many years and, and really helped us with our financial management system, our 10 year financial planning effort. He's on the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System Board. I believe he's the chair now. And so just has a lot of great financial planning experience and he's added a lot of value to us here at Coconino County. And last, but certainly not least, Dr. Fred Solup, who is in the audience. And Fred has been key as a consultant advising us on past voter information efforts. In terms of all the information that we provide to you, Fred is someone who really dives in to our information and really helps seek to understand what's happening, what are people saying, how are people feeling, et cetera. I'm particularly pleased to share that our employee forums are going very well. It's interesting, services that have been provided in Coconino County for so many years, we talk about for the people, by the people. Employee forums are the people providing those services. People managing and running our elections, people providing vaccines, people doing COVID tests, people managing our criminal justice system, right? All throughout our systems. And it's been really fun to be able to connect with our employees, particularly as a new county management team. And we've really, we've really tapped into who has the most seniority in the room. And there's a lot of pride in that, certainly. In terms of who's been there the longest, a lot of 24, 25 year employees. And that's, that's very meaningful to our organization because those are the people that are the backbone to the services that we provide. How has the county changed since you've been here? If you think about the expenditure limitation and being established in 1980, just simple, simple metrics, price of gas, just over a dollar a gallon in 1980 to almost $4 a gallon now, right? And population, Coconino County, 75,000, nearly doubled to almost 145,000 today. So those changes in, in and of themselves, but also the number of parks, the open space. We built since that time, a new jail in both Flagstaff and Page. We have community emergency response teams. There's so many individuals that provide service. We also have Prop 403 and that was our road maintenance sales tax initiative. It was approved in November 4th of 2014, 10 years ago now. And it's proven what we've been able to do with the funds. And Prop 403? And Prop 403, those sales tax initiatives specifically for road maintenance are included in the expenditure limitation. And so that's something that we really need to be cognizant of as well and manage through. Since 403 has been approved, 25 capital improvement projects, about 48 million of that time, 2 million per year in pavement preservation projects, which is also important in our community as well as county maintained Navajo Nation school bus routes, 286 miles there. Something else we've been looking at and the weather is down in Prescott right now, by that I mean Gregory and Keith that are at the County Managers Association meeting and we've asked them, what are other counties up to? What are the ballot measures? What's taking place? Yavapai County will also have an expenditure limitation on the ballot and of course, people want to know what's Coconino County doing and by the way, can we have your materials? Well, that's a bit flattering because we know that we work to do things in the best way possible and we know that we're a leader throughout the state of Arizona in that way. Pinau County is looking at a renewal on their transportation tax. Listen to that's, that's interesting. And then Maricopa, well they, it sounds like they can't do a jail district, but they're looking in 2026, a jail excise tax for their jail, they're looking at going to the ballot in 2026. That said, they need, and I don't know the dynamics with Maricopa County, but it sounds like they need legislative approval to be able to do that. So they're working to that end as well. So, so all counties are managing their fiscal futures differently and it's really good to know how every county acts and behaves. But we're going to focus on ours today and again, we've been focusing on our employees, the employee forums and that's been very enlightening and just really fun to connect to everyone, all the people that work to provide those services. So today, we're going to provide an overview on our progress and it's important to know that we'll be meeting with each of you and also providing more details to the board as we progress. With that, we have our, this is our first official meeting back from the break, although I don't think any of you have really taken a real break based on what I've seen and what we've experienced. But we're really happy to reconvene with one another today and then Tuesday, our first board meeting back. I want to particularly acknowledge our clerk of the board, Lindsey Daly and Val Weber and Nico and how hard they've worked. A lot of things happening, one has been the statements for the ballot initiatives were due on Wednesday and so we had quite an influx of people into the clerk's office. I believe 16 people submitted pro statements for the Coconino County Expenditure Limitation Permanent Base Adjustment. We did not have any con statements. And then the packets and the packets are pretty overwhelming with all the voter information that you got today, for today. And then with our first meeting back on Tuesday, a lot of pent up demand to meet with the board on approval items. So you have, I don't know, 71 items, it's a lot. And so just want to thank the clerk for keeping this organized because we know it was, it was, it's been quite a week this week. And it's, and today is a culmination of a lot of hard work and then Tuesday will be as well. So with that, I'll turn it to Lucinda Andreani and Lucinda, I don't know if you want to introduce some of our team members as well. So, thank you.
Good, great to be here this morning and getting back at it again. Thank you Andy. You know, I'm really pleased to see the progress that we're making to ensure a successful voter information program that provides the information that we know our voters expect. The history here in Coconino County is that we have a very engaged electorate and that they have high expectations for transparency and information relative to local ballot measures. We've seen that repeatedly, not only for county measures, but city measures, other jurisdictions, measures. People have a high expectation to be provided the information. They want to be informed, they want to be respected. And of course, that's our intent. Whether or not to increase this expenditure limit is a voter decision and we will respect that decision. But we do not want to hear that any voter didn't have the information that they needed to make an informed decision. Or they didn't vote on the measure because of lack of information. So that's really our goal is to fill what, what is now currently as we go into this, an information, you know, void. And unlike some of the other measures, including the one two years ago on funding the jail district, the road maintenance sales tax, where it's a pretty simple equation and it's pretty easy to understand. Okay, if I vote for this, it's going to take tax money and it's going to improve roads or we're going to be able to maintain a jail. Very, pretty very basic equation. This major and expenditure limit, nobody sits around thinking about expenditure, expenditure limits. Nobody really has a very much of an understanding of that. We all had to learn what that meant over the last year. So I think we've got, you know, particular challenge in terms of the information that is expected, needs to be shared. I'm pleased to be working with Alan and Fred once again. They've both been involved with us through a number of our local ballot measures and also appreciate Andrew's legal expertise. I'm excited to be working with a strong internal team and I think pretty much everyone knows who's on that team, Corey, Melissa. But there's a, pretty much everyone, this is an all hands on deck effort. And I hope that that message is resonating during the employee forums that that everyone is a communicator relative to this and needs to be provided the information so that they can share the information, you know, with their families, with their neighbors. And that, that role that we all play in supporting voter education and information is very important. So. You know, and again, it's not, it's not a simple concept. So understanding what, what is the expenditure limit? And why is the county asking to increase that? It's a challenging concept and it's gonna, it's gonna take time and a significant effort. I want to emphasize what Andy said is that we will be meeting with you individually. Now that you're coming back off a break, we'll be setting up individual meetings and we'll be walking through a lot more detail with you in those individual meetings. One thing you'll hear today, and I think Fred will reemphasize, and a practice that we've used historically is having a significant number of meetings with community groups and within communities and neighborhoods across the county. The chapter houses, et cetera. That direct contact with people is really highly valued and is very important to providing that information. So we'll be having those meetings, as Andy mentioned, we'll be doing updates here with the board as well, but I think those one on ones. And it's going to be a very, very hectic fall, very hectic fall. We had 129 meetings that we did for the road maintenance sales tax. It's a lot of meetings. And you know, things have changed, people are much more oriented toward social media and media sources now. But in this county, connecting with people in their communities is still extremely important. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Erica.
Thank you Lucinda. Good morning Madam Chair, members of the board. Each of you has a binder that we have prepared specifically for these meetings and to be updated throughout the meetings that we have on the planning calendar. So I just wanted to take a moment and go through what's in this binder at this time, knowing that we'll be adding to it as we move forward. Under the first tab are the presentations for today. The presentation, this slideshow that we're going to be sharing and just an outline of who will be speaking to you today, as we mentioned with, with Andrew, with Alan, with Fred, all of the presenters that you'll be seeing today. And our intent is that this first tab would be whatever that update is, so you can move these materials back or just stack on top of them as needed. Under the second tab, we have a couple different documents, including our frequently asked questions. And those frequently asked questions are really a living document in that we will continue to add to them as we receive questions. As we have questions that we know will resonate with others and so we'll be continuing to update those. Also a copy of the resolution that the board adopted on the 20th of February of this year is in there. And we will have a draft of the publicity pamphlet as well. And so that publicity pamphlet is in the process, the pro con statements that we just had the deadline for, need to be added to that. There's translation that's going on for that and so we'll be sharing that with all of you soon. Under the third tab, we have some different communication materials here. We have the, the mark that you see on the front of the binder and on this slide for Prop 482. So you can see that, that mark that was developed to, to help our, our voters know that this, what this information is connected to, which proposition it is connected to. So they're, they're clear on the information that they're receiving. Also, there is a screenshot of the informational page on our website. So that you'll have an opportunity to see what that looks like. There is a, there's a copy of the sticker that is this mark. And then there are the press releases that were sent out for arguments sought for and against. Both of those press releases are there, as well as an email that went to, to county employees, letting them know about the pro con statements as well. So that's all under Tab 3. And then under Tab 4 is a space for PowerPoint presentations. And this includes the presentations that Finance Director Siri Malaney made to the board on this topic already. So you'll have them for reference in case you were thinking back to a previous presentation that was made and had questions, that these are there printed for you in case you wanted to look back at that. Certainly there are other tabs if we need other additional information as we progress through the additional meetings, but wanted to let you know the, the materials that we had assembled for you. And with that, I'm going to, if there are no questions, I'll turn it back to Lucinda.
Next joining us is Andrew McGuire with Gus Rosenfeld, who is serving as our outside counsel relative to the ballot measure. Has a lot of experience in this arena. He's worked with numerous cities and other types of jurisdictions on ballot measures in particular expenditure limits. So I think. Okay.
Thank you Lucinda. I don't have anything to throw up on the slide while I could share my screen, but I think I can talk through the materials that really shouldn't take a whole lot of time. I don't want to overwhelm you with the legal perspective that we come at this with. Because a lot of what we do and everything that we spend our time and energy on is ensuring that what the county produces and puts out to the world is both within the bounds of the statutes, but it's also within the guidance that we've received from other case law or things that are not necessarily clear sometimes. And so one of our main focuses is that we always have to make sure we have factual information. That's the easy one to say is that we can't use evocative words, we can't get creative with color. We've had to make corrections or, or changes to materials because all of our, our folks, whether they're outside consultants or on staff are always very good about making very colorful and evocative things, but unfortunately sometimes, you know, we'll end up with green for good, red for bad and, you know, and things like that on the slides. So we look for little nuances like that, that folks could point to as advocacy rather than as just pure information. And the reason we do that is that by statute, the, the county, all of its employees, all of its elected officials, appointed officials are all bound by the same rule that you are not allowed to advocate on behalf of or against a bond or ballot measure of any kind. It includes candidates, but in this case, it's, you know, it's a ballot measure. So what we are always trying to do is, is remind folks that there's a really fine line and very gray boundary around that line for what is actual advocacy with versus what is factual and just information you would normally provide to your voters. Now on the good side, the county has done a really good job of being out there with its voters, frequently updating people and you have a very good citizen outreach process. That's historically the way you've been doing it. Because one of the things that people who would look to upset your system would be trying to do is to point to differences if you did something different than you did the time before. And there are some AG's opinion and some guidance that we have from the AG's office that talks about whether or not what you're doing is in the normal course of how you do things. And so we're trying to make sure when you're doing an override election like this one, that you're intending to follow your exact same process while being clear with people what's different about this particular one. I always point people back to the bar that I keep in my head when we're doing these analyses. And it's from a case, I like to say a few years ago, but every time I do that, I realize this case was from the beginning of when I started practicing 30 years ago. And so it's not really a few years ago anymore, it's a lot of years ago. The city of Tucson was sued over materials they had for a road bond election. And there's a footnote in that case that is terrifying to lawyers who work in this area. Because footnotes are always one of those, hey, just so you know, this is something that wasn't at issue, but if it would have been, here's how we would have gone. It says, and this is a quote from the court, that they note, we note that earlier versions of the communications at issue contained features that might well have tipped the scale towards an unambiguous urging of a particular vote. Including a checked box next to the words Proposition 400 and Proposition 100. But the city voluntarily stopped disseminating information in that manner. Now what you may or may not have noticed as I was reading that is that the checked box didn't say yes. It was just the proposition number with a check mark in a box next to it. So from the Arizona court's view, that was too far. So whenever I'm looking at the materials that we're putting out to the public, that's my guiding principle. Do we avoid the check mark? Because that is a pretty low bar in my mind. If, even if you're not saying vote yes or no, you're just putting a check mark next to it. So that's the framework I come at it with. So if you, if you hear comments back from me or hear me pulling back the reins, you'll know why. I'm, I'm the paid pessimist. I'm the one who's, you know, needs to be paranoid for everybody. And I'm paranoid because of things like the Cromco case. So I'll be happy answering questions, but I don't want to take up too much of your time this morning.
Great, thank you Andrew. There appears that there are no questions, so we'll move forward. Lindsay, do we have Alan on with Alan McGuire, with the McGuire Company? Is he on yet? And is Siri going to participate as well? Is that the plan? Is that the plan? There he is. All right, good morning, Alan. He's obviously gone to find a quiet space. Can you hear us, Alan? We can see you. Can we, can you hear us? Can you speak and see if we can hear you? They're obviously not hearing us. We cannot hear you. He's unmuted. Lindsay, yeah? Yeah, it's, your, your mic must not be working. It's showing you're unmuted and you're unmuted on our end.
Test 123.
There he is.
Good, 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 good. Sorry about that. I don't really know where I am.
All right, good morning. Go ahead, you can proceed, Alan.
Okay, so, so we, I apologize for being late. I had a presentation down in Tucson, which I just finished. And I think we're going to talk about the Auditor General. Is that the topic that we're, is that where you are?
Yes, yes.
Well, I'll make a couple of comments I think are important with regard to this particular issue. I will tell you that the, the state guidance, mostly from the Auditor General, but also by state law regarding the conduct of an expenditure limitation election by a county are the most prescriptive of any election out there. They really tell you exactly what you can do and kind of imply that that's all you can do. When they don't say that's not, that's all you can do. But the function is, is pretty significant. Andrew can talk about that some, some ways better than I can. But I think that has impacted our ability to try to figure out, what do we put in the publicity pamphlet, for example? How much can we say or not say? And so as it turns out, I think the guidance from the Auditor General is prescriptive, not, certainly not complete, but also makes you kind of lean towards less rather than more. And I think that's important. The role of the Auditor General in the expenditure limitation is powerful. I mean, they are, they are sort of judge and jury on your performance. Now, you guys have done a great job over the years and you've worked the limitation as best you can. Obviously now maybe the time to increase it if the voters agree with that. But I think the, that, that's very important. And, and I think that everything that we have done so, that you guys have done so far, you've submitted your critical statement to them. They've approved all of those. That's very useful. So you've complied with all of their strict requirements. And then the remaining question is, how much flexibility do you have beyond that? I think you have some, probably not as much as you have, for example, with your, your jail tax or with your health services tax that you passed in the past. So we have to be a little bit more careful in terms of what we say in the publicity pamphlet. I do not think that those constraints apply in the same way with regard to, for example, presentations that members of the board might do or presentations that Andy or Lucinda might do. I think those are really more with regard to the printed documents you send out there. So I think we'll find that handouts, PowerPoints, things like that that you prepare have more discretion and will look more like your typical product than the publicity pamphlet. Mine does look, okay. Those are my comments. I would be happy to answer any questions unless there's something else you want me to talk about.
Great, thank you so much, Alan. Appreciate your time and stepping away from the conference. And Alan's been really supportive over the years, particularly relative to the publicity pamphlet and, and other communications as well, but particularly, particularly the publicity pamphlet. And I think within your packets, you've got a copy of the frequently asked questions. And that will be a component of the publicity pamphlet. It's gone through many iterations to date. And it will continue to go through the, you know, ultimately, I think by, what Cory, the 20th, we have to submit, you know, the document to the publisher for the publicity pamphlet. So that FAQ won't change. But the FAQ that will live on the, online on the website will continue to be updated. Because as you're out there and we're out there, we will hear new questions or we will hear questions and, and, you know, we, we will have to respond and think about, is there another way to position this answer to better provide the information? So there will be modifications to that piece over time. And, and, you know, always if you're looking for the most current information, go to the website because we will keep the most current documents there, available not only to you but to the public. So, so great, thanks so much, Alan. So next, we're going to talk a little bit about, we've developed a pretty detailed action plan. We're not going to go over that today. It's a very lengthy document. But when we meet with you individually, we'll be walking through that with you. But what for today, relative to today's efforts, I, I think foremost is that we have, have met the deadlines to date. And Cory's going to walk through the deadlines to date. And then what are the deadlines that are approaching? I just mentioned one, the submission of the publicity pamphlet. And we're, we're moving forward with that. I think we're, we're pretty close to being able to finalize that. We've got another week plus, basically about a week and a half before we have to finalize that and have that submitted. But he'll walk through those dates. Other key, key pieces, you know, relative to the overall effort, we'll talk about under communications. So Cory, you want to share those dates?
Thank you, Lucinda. Madam Chair, Members of the Board. So as you've heard in chronological order, we're moving forward. And we've satisfied all requirements to date, including successfully submitting the summary and detailed analysis to the Auditor General's office. The most recent deadline being August 7th, the closing and submission of all pro and con statements submitted to the clerk's office. Only those received by the 7th at close of business may be presented in the publicity pamphlet. The next important date is today, where we will actually supply the potential page count to our vendors so that they can order supplies for the production of the pamphlet. Following, we have August 20th. The final pamphlet will be solidified. So no other edits will be made to that pamphlet after August 20th. You heard earlier today from the County Recorder's Office, working with the County Recorder's Office, we will confirm current county households with their office. All of the residents within Coconino County, those numbers and addresses will be downloaded and supplied to the vendor on August 27th to have the publicity pamphlets mailed to those locations. September 2nd is the Labor Day holiday. September 5th, the final household mailers will be updated with county recorder information. And we can anticipate the pamphlets hitting mailboxes as early as September 23rd through that week to September 28th. The deadline, statutory deadline for mailers is October 1st. So residents should be receiving them before October 1st. You heard also from Elections and Recorder, October 7th is the close of voter registration. October 9th begins early voter regis, or early voting begins, October 9th. And then October 17th, supplemental pamphlets will be mailed out. This is a practice for any voters who move or relocate within precincts in Coconino County between the time the first initial voter information is mailed and those that are still eligible to vote in Coconino County. And the supplemental mailers will be mailed to those people who register in time to vote in the November election. And then those will be mailed out approximately October 18th. And lastly, November 5th is the election day. So those are the most important dates moving forward. Happy to answer any questions or repeat any dates if you did not catch those.
All right, thank you, Cory. We'll go ahead and move to discussing communications. And again, this is something we'll get into in more detail with you individually. But a lot of effort going into developing a very comprehensive communication plan. I think it's in really good shape. We're starting to work with specific organizations within the various communities and the chapter houses to identify meeting dates. Some of these organizations, a small number really in our county, take positions on measures like this. And so, but we're reaching out to a pretty wide variety of organizations throughout the county so that we can, again, have that face-to-face communication through, through a number of meetings and other opportunities as well. Some may have membership newsletters. They may have other means of communicating with their, with their, their groups or their constituencies. And, you know, maybe are, and are interested in informing them about local activity like this, like a measure. So next up, I'd like to introduce Dr. Fred Sala. And again, Fred's worked with us on all of our measures, at least over the last 20 years that we've been working together on these. And Fred has worked, done tremendous amount of work over those years to, to really gauge and get a better understanding about what, what do voters understand about a particular issue? What do they, you know, what kinds of information are they interested in receiving and that type of thing? So today Fred's going to really focus on some work that he's done to hear what, what do voters need to know? What do they want to know relative to this measure? So I think that'll be, it's obviously directly supporting us and making sure that we provide the information that is of interest and that they, that voters believe they need. So with that, I'll turn it over to Fred. Thank you, Fred.
Thank you, Lucinda. Madam Chair, Members of the Board of Supervisors, appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'm Fred Sala, founder and director of Global Local Vision, a social research company based in Flagstaff. And as Lucinda said, I've been involved with the county working for 20-plus years on propositions when, when the county decides to go to the ballot. And, and I appreciate that the county has always been committed to hearing from voters and trying to understand voter sentiment, trying to understand what voters think about propositions before the election day and, and try to be respectful of voter wishes. And, and the same is true this cycle. We went out and spoke to undecided voters to, to hear what they needed to know, what they wanted to understand about this, this proposition. And, and the first question that, that's near unanimous, unanimous is what are the proposal details? As Lucinda said, this, this is not an easy issue. This is a difficult issue. And, and we can present information about the proposition, a few sentences that try to educate the voters. But voters still want to know, what are the details? What does it mean? Many people would just look at this and say, I need to read more information. I need to hear more about the pros and the cons. I want to see it in writing. So the, the main message we're hearing is, what are the proposal details? What, what does this all mean? Then we go to the next level, which is how will money from additional spending authority be allocated? So we're not talking about money that doesn't exist. This money exists, but we're talking about money that the county doesn't have the authority to spend at the moment. We often talk about increasing the base expenditure limit, $7.7 million. That's from 1980. But when we translate that to 2024, we're talking about $63 million. How will that $63 million be spent? How will it be allocated? Which programs are going to, are going to see an increase in expenditures? Beyond that, people want to understand, how is the money currently allocated? How, what does the budget currently look like? And, and I know that, that information is out there. You're, you're constantly educating residents of the county about, about the budget and, and the processes that it takes to formulate that budget. But, but now we're talking about increase in spending authority. People want to see that information very clearly on paper. How is the money spent? How will this new spending authority be, be allocated? So now, if supported, people are concerned about their taxes, rightfully so. Will my taxes increase? And specifically, that's typically a property tax. Will my property taxes increase? People want to know what the impact is going to be for them. And, and we can say that there will be no increase in taxes. This is not related to taxes. And, and we can say, as we will in the publicity pamphlet, that there are limits on, on increasing taxes. This does not touch increases, taxes by any means. People want to see that in writing. People want to have that information. What are the sources of additional revenue? Where is the money coming from? We're talking about revenue that can't be spent. What are the sources of that revenue? Here again, what is the size of the county budget? How is money allocated differently across different departments? How large will the budget be if this proposition passes? So again, we're talking about $63 million. That's potential increase. The budget is, is allocated every year. There's a process by which the Board of Supervisors engage. And, and people want to understand that information. They want to see that in writing. What happens if the measure fails? What is, what's the impact on the budget? The money is there. Will there be any impacts that are noticeable to voters? Then finally, we have concern, what was the logic behind the 1980 decision? I, I appreciate Andy talking about differences between 1980 and 2024. We're 40-plus years away from when this, this decision was made in 1980. What was the logic at that time? And how has that logic changed over time? Why is it a different logic today? When talking to voters, there's a concern about services. People want to know the impacts on their services. People recognize the county and understand what the county does through services that impact them directly. And what we're hearing repeatedly in order, in order of how frequently we're hearing about this is public works, specifically roads and road maintenance. What will be the impact on roads, especially in rural communities? The sheriff's office. People understand what the sheriff's office does. People understand law enforcement and are supportive of the sheriff's office. We've seen that repeatedly. We just saw that in renewal of the jail tax. And then health, health department impacts. What are the, what, what will the impact be for this proposition on services coming from the health department to people throughout the county? People mention also, we, we saw earlier in our discussions, people do reference crises, crisis response. They understand that the county's been very effective at responding to crisis, whether it's wildfires, post wildfire flooding. And people respect the county for doing that. They appreciate the county for doing that. They see the direct impact from the county doing that, and they want that to continue. So moving into the future, the publicity pamphlets, the communication documents need to address the voter questions. And they need to provide information through different communication vehicles. In other words, you can't just put out information in one document and say, we're done. People need to see the material in different ways, at different times. Information reinforces itself over time. So there needs to be frequent information dispersal from the county. And that includes holding And that includes holding meetings. The community meetings that Lucinda referenced are key. This is a very unique election coming up. There's going to be, I think of it as a lot of information. We're a battleground state, a lot of money, a lot of advertising. There's a lot of noise out there. How is the county going to break through the noise? One way the county breaks through the noise is through stakeholder meetings, through community meetings, through personally engaging people throughout the county. And it's important. It's important to go outside of Flagstaff and talk to residents of the county, talk to voters throughout the county. So we need to hold those community meetings. And the reference point for all of this is about services. People understand the county through the services that are delivered, through the services that are received, through the services they perceive. And that's law enforcement, that's road maintenance, that's snow removal, that's disaster emergency response. People understand the county through services. So what are the impacts going to be on services? Any questions about what needs to be communicated? And how that information needs to be communicated?
This way to board?
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you Fred. You know, we really value that, that's the computer here, that's okay. Really value that having a local source to help us understand, you know, where are the gaps in understanding? And what are the questions that voters have, you know, about these measures? And Fred's providing that service and it's really valuable to us. So thank you Fred. And as well contributing because then obviously as we move into developing publicity pamphlet communications, we're translating what are those needs for information into those documents. So talking a little bit more about communication, a lot going on on that front. As I mentioned, there's an effort underway primarily being done by Cory and Jen to really identify, we've identified a large number of opportunities for meetings with key stakeholders and community groups and communities. And we're in the process of nailing down those dates and so forth. And you'll start seeing a calendar roll to you around those meetings. And so we'll be working a lot with your directors to ensure that those meetings get on your calendar and that you're prepared for those meetings and so forth. We're developing a lot of the base communication materials. Right now, we're developing an overarching communication piece that we will use as a supplement to these meetings as well as pieces that can be shared with organizations that have an interest in one information. Likely we'll be dovetailing that piece with the report to citizens. As you know, we typically do a report to citizens in the spring and again in the fall. We're planning that again this year. And there will be a segment of that report to citizens that will focus on Prop 482. And again, providing that information that's been identified as needed by the voters. So we're making really good progress. I want to point out, you can see on your materials, on your agenda, that we've developed an icon, a mark for the proposition that really tries to capture that this is about sustaining services. This is funding, as we all know, these are revenues that we already have, voters have already approved, that we want to be able to utilize to continue to sustain our services. And so that's a key element of this. We are showing, of course, the law enforcement, a wildfire, a snowplow, to again relate this back to services. Because when the county, people think about the county, what do they think of? They think of our services. That's what they think of. And rightly so, that's why we're here. With that, I'll have Melissa cover a bit more. And again, when we meet with you, we'll get into more detail, a little bit more on what we're doing relative to communications. But just want to assure you that things are, I think we're in very good shape to move forward, a very strong communication effort, information effort. So I'm excited about it.
Good morning Chair, members of the board. So I want to start just by reiterating our communications goals. Because our department and what we do in communications is really disseminate the messaging and disseminate the information. But really, our goals are to make sure that all county voters have ready access to accurate information regarding Prop 482. And we want to make sure that voters understand the impacts of increasing and not increasing the expenditure limit through a base adjustment. And we also want to make sure, and finally, that the voters recognize the question on the ballot and feel confident that they're making an informed decision when it comes to Prop 482. So what I'm going to share today is just what we've done so far. And then Lucinda has already touched on a few of the things on what's next, but I'll go ahead and repeat those. What we've done so far, we issued a press release about the resolution that you passed to put Prop 482 on the ballot. We issued a press release about the pro-con statements. And we also published that in the paper of record, the Arizona Daily Sun. And then after announcing that, when there were just a few days left to turn in your statements, we went ahead and sent another reminder release to make sure everyone who wanted to participate had the opportunity to. And right now, we've got an information webpage that has the FAQ, the timeline, and an email address for questions. So the webpage is at coconino.az.gov/prop482. And the email is prop482@coconino.az.gov. So through that webpage, people have the opportunity to read the FAQ. If they have any additional questions, they can send an email and we'll get that answered for them. So what's next? Lucinda mentioned our main information piece, which would be a handout that we can pass out at events, at meetings, we can send via email. And then the report to citizens section. And there's a potential for a mailer or a postcard as we get closer. That's a decision we've yet to make. And what we're going to do next when it comes to media, we'll send a press release about the website as a source of information so people know where to go when they have a question. That's all I have. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. All right, thank you.
Great, thanks Melissa. And another, of course, element to all the communications are events. And Brian's taken the lead on managing those. But we've got, as we know, across the county, we have a number of events. We have the fair, we have the Western Agency Fair, Navajo Nation Western Agency Fair in October. And we've got a number of activities throughout the county. And then those provide the opportunity to have those conversations, you know, with voters and with residents about the proposition. So that's a key element. I think we've touched on most of the key pieces of the communication. You know, it's the diligence in continuing to make sure that we're doing that repetitive outreach, as Fred said. Because people are busy. You know, they have kids, they have activities going on in their lives. And, you know, they're challenged, right? To be ready. And so some of those pieces that remind people, hey, the election's coming. It's time to sit down and review your publicity pamphlet and make sure you're ready. You know, those kinds of things are important. And particularly this year, we know there's going to be a tremendous amount of communication going on and going to be a very long ballot because of the number, particularly because of the number of state ballot measures that have been placed on by the legislature. So, you know, reminding people that there are local measures that are important to them that they should consider and that we need their input. We need their attention to those matters. And the good thing is that most people do, in this county, we've had a lot of recognition that local measures are important. And so that again, as long as we're continuing to remind people and providing that information, I think we'll be very successful in getting that information across, right? Getting that information to people and being responsive and to their questions. And so again, that FAQ won't be static. It will be developing over time. So happy to answer any questions relative to the overall communication effort. And we'll keep working away, we're meeting weekly. So, and again, we'll have a master calendar that can be shared with you. That'll be, you know, be very, will be a lot of activity. It'll be a lot of activity.
Supervisor Vasquez?
Yes, thank you. You hit on it right as I was going to ask the question about timeline. When are these community meetings going to start?
Most of the community meetings will be either in latter August or September, October. The reality in this area, particularly the Flagstaff area, it's very hard to get people's attention until kids are well into school and people have gotten into their routines. We've seen that repetitively over and over again. That's very hard to, you know, a lot of the organizations take the summer off, those types of things, right? They come back, they're active in September. That's why outreach is going on now though, to get those scheduled. So we're sure we're on those agendas. And part of that, I know we're looking at a joint meeting with the city toward the end of the City of Flagstaff. We're also reaching out to the other City of Williams, City of Page, City of Sedona in terms of potential meetings with their councils, chambers, you know, other organizations. And it varies from community, some communities, chambers are very active, other communities, it's other organizations that are very active. So, you know, it takes a lot of effort, one-on-one effort to communicate and set those meetings up. But typically, we get a good reception. People want to know what we're doing. Why are we doing what we're doing? And they want to support voter education and information as well.
One of the things that I was looking for was the language, the language at the chapter meetings. You will need to have probably interpreters that will translate that into the language that maybe Mon Kopee, maybe other tribes too.
Right, absolutely. Absolutely. And we will develop a specific communication piece for Navajo Nation that provides information specific to the services that we provide there. And we did that during 403, the road maintenance. We will do that again now so that we're providing specific information. There's health department services, other departmental services beyond roads that we provide on nation. That's important that we share that information because that'll be a key question. What services do you provide? How will this affect those services? We know that's going to be a key question.
Supervisor Hes?
Yeah, I'm sure you said it already, but I want to make sure. The website is live now?
The website is live now.
Okay, so we can, those questions are going to be better than me trying to muddle it up and I can give them that. Thank you.
And that basic communication piece, you know, you'll get pretty, you'll get repetitively really a good stack of those. You'll get lots of those through this process. And it will have both the website, of course, on it as well as the email. So that, you know, if you're out and someone says, hey, I have more, I want more information about this or that, you can hand that to them and say, here's some information. But if you have more questions, here's the email address. Use the email and email us. It's, that's a really, we've done that, you know, through all of our disaster efforts as well. And that's been a very powerful connection point for people to be able to know they can email and get an answer.
Supervisor Horseman?
Yes, thank you. I really appreciate all this information. I am excited to get out in the public, to get the information out to the public. And I appreciate everybody's good information that we can use to make sure that our public knows what's coming on the ballot, what it really means. You're right, it can break down to something pretty simple, but it also has a lot of nuances to it. So I really appreciate this. And Madam Chair, members of the board, I will be calling in. I've got to travel downtown and I will be calling in. So I'll still be on the board meeting, but I am going to sign off on Zoom and I'll be with you on the phone. So thank you and thank you all for your hard work on this and look forward to getting the information out to our public.
Thank you. And I think one of the last pieces here is relative to each of you formulating your own story about how are you going to speak to this, you know, at these meetings? And certainly, our intent is to support you with that. How do you speak to this issue? What is, you know, and what do you, because you're close to your district and your constituents and you need to think that through. What's going to resonate with them? What do I think the questions they're going to specifically have in the areas when I go to these specific meetings? And so, you know, we'll be working with you on that in terms of developing. But think about, I always think about when I'm out doing the public speaking, we're telling a story. We're telling a story about who is the county, what this is and why are we doing this? And providing that basic information, the information that Fred's identified to help people understand who we are, what we're doing and why is this measure on the ballot? And what does it mean to them and the services that they get from the county?
Thank you Lucinda, Chair Bagey, if you don't mind. And really, thank you for the question Supervisor Vasquez in terms of when are the community groups happening? Really, in keeping with county tradition, the county fair happens over the Labor Day weekend. County tradition is we have a fair. County tradition is we have a presence at the fair. People want to know what's happening with the county. Western Navajo Fair, we have a tradition of being there. We have a tradition of having equipment there for the Kids' Day to see. We have a tradition of being on KTNN radio and having radio spots just to communicate with folks, what's happening in Coconino County? In fact, as your new county manager, people have reached out to me in community groups. Hey, are you interested in coming to talk to us? Like the Flagstaff Chamber of Commerce, for example. What's happening at the county? We want to hear from you. We want to hear your vision for the county and the services that you provide. Can you come speak with us? So much of it is in keeping with what we, the county, do as a tradition. Also, please note that Cory Ringenberg, really, I felt like laid out a really good timeline for, it takes a lot to put on an election. We know that, we just heard it with the canvassing of the primary elections. Oh my gosh, our elections department, the Recorder's Office, the work that they put into that. We have a small bit of that in putting a ballot measure on the ballot for people to be able to vote on their local issues. October 9th, early voting begins, I believe that. And people, we know that we have a community that will research the issues, that will educate themselves on the issues. When they get that early voting ballot in the publicity pamphlet, they will read their materials. And we will have materials in there on that. Another thing that we need to communicate is, please be patient. Get through your ballot. This will be a four-page ballot. This is going to be one of the longest ballots that a voter has seen, probably in their history of voting. All the way from a national presidential election through all the state initiatives. And there are what, 13? Because that's been, sort of Fred Sala talked about, what was the state thinking? What was the state policy at that time? What was the state fiscal policy in 1980 to even put an expenditure limitation to regulate us as local governments? Because there are many other regulators out there like our revenue collections. Truth in taxation plus 2% on the property tax side. So state, the state policy more recently or way of being has been, put it on the ballot. Let the voters decide. Well, it's a long ballot. And by the time they get to our local issues, voter fatigue could be happening. So please be patient and remember, all, as we all say, policy, community, et cetera, it's local. It starts local and it is local. So we're looking forward to just getting out there and visiting with the public. And they're asking great questions and a lot of the- And, and they're asking great questions and a lot of the questions that Fred pointed out in his presentation, our employees are asking. That just shows that our community is in tune to what's happening in our community. So Lucinda, what else do we need to talk about with this expenditure limitation? If, if you're, you, the board are okay with that being it for today on the expenditure limitation? We as staff are. Okay. There are a few other items on the agenda for today. And one was, the next one would be future board retreat planning. Oh, Alan.
Hi, I just want to make a couple of comments if I could. I didn't want to interrupt the flow, so I waited to the end. You know, I've had the good fortune of work with you guys for a long time. You guys have a tremendous staff and you have set a standard for these public education campaigns like no one else in the state. And you've lived up to that standard. You've got terrific staff to do this, the comments that Lucinda made, the comments that Andy made. That shows the depth and quality of your staff. I also want to say, I've had the good fortune, I guess, to work with a lot of pollsters over the years, particularly on local government issues. There's no one in the business better than Fred. Fred does, he does a quality survey, he gets reliable data and his interpretation, because of his experience and long experience with you guys in particular, is spot on. I mean, if there's a guy to go to to get a good sense of what the folks out there think, Fred's the guy. So you are armed with all the best of people and information to go forward with this. And I think that will reflect in the communications that you do going forward. So I just wanted to say those things. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. I just want to thank the whole team that did the presentation where we started and we're going to keep going and we're going to make sure that we get everyone up to par with, you know, what the questions they may have regarding the expenditure limit. And, you know, I think, you know, we're on the right track and I just want to say thank you to all of you and all your hard work that you're putting into it. We have a lot of projects going on at the same time, but, you know, you're, you're doing that. So I think, I think all of you that did the presentation, Ellen also, Ellen, and then also Fred, thank you so much. And, and Andrew, thank you. Thank you so much for helping us.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. The next items I had noted on the agenda, just wanted to ensure that we have a future board retreat on top of mind or in our minds as we go forward. With that, we've, we've looked at some potential dates and sorry, Madam Chair, I'm overstepping, but that's item number three on the agenda. So with that, we're looking at that week of a, of a holiday week at the end of November, that Monday, Tuesday potentially as a retreat. And just wanted to, for, for all of us to be thinking about potential topics. By that time, the vote will have happened. We will have gotten through our election on November 5th and we will know about who will be in, in leadership on many levels and what we are working with going forward. With that, just want to make sure that we don't miss out on a, on a, on a board retreat and where we can just all get together and talk about what's important to all of us, how we move forward as a team, as an organization, how we as staff can work with you individually as board members and collectively as a group, which is also important because there are strength, there is strength in numbers.
Any comments? Supervisor Vasquez?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. It's good to see everything. Hit my button on accident. And looking at all the information, we have our work cut out for us to educate the community. There's so many different parts to this and it's very complex and kind of abstract, as was mentioned before. And so I really appreciate having the data and the information to be able to help start educating the community. And we got, what, 85 days or so? So clock is ticking. Thanks, team.
We were, we were still talking expenditure limit, but someone went ahead of us, but.
I'm excited.
So would you like to make a comment?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, the expenditure limit's already been brought about a few of my community meetings. So it's one of those things that, the, the questions that we got from Fred are, are great. And that's, the questions are great for, for getting our constituents because they, they don't even know what the EL is at this point. So they don't even know what questions to ask. So I really, I really appreciate the staff's work to get the questions that are going to ask before they even ask them. That way they, they know that they're on the right track and that they know they're not just asking questions off in right field. It kind of, it kind of narrows them to say, okay, that is the question I would have. So with that, I think the polling, all those things, the, the website being live is going to be huge. That's the one thing that when I get there, I can, I can speak to it. The services is, is huge. That's the big thing I hit up is, you know, snow removal. We would like to hire more people to do that. So the website being live and, and, and being able to update, as you said, Lucinda, that's, that's key. And I really appreciate how hard that is to maintain and hard, how hard that is to continue to adjust. And, and just like our folders that you were saying, I really appreciate that. And, and this is something that as a team, we've really got to get out there and get the education because it's, it's something that's going to help everybody in our community. So thank you, staff.
Thank you. Supervisor Horstman, would you like to make comment or? Okay, I guess she's off. So now we're into the, so you mentioned something about, the county manager mentioned something regarding the end of November to have a board retreat. I believe we can just keep, keep, be, keep updated regarding the dates that you're looking at. And we definitely need one, you know, to really help you, help the staff and any some of the plans that you may have and get, get to know what's, you know, certain things are coming to the board or will be coming up or something that's been completed and how the pro, the process and also how, how effective it was or whatever, just any kind of, you know, things that we can talk about. So now we have the expenditure discussion, possible direction regarding FY 2026 budget process, county manager.
Thank you, Chair-Begay, members of the board. And we definitely want to connect with you on a deeper level with a, with a retreat. And the thinking is that we would get through our November election and then, and then focus on getting this all together at that level. With the budget direction, sorry, I always struggle with the microphones. With the budget direction, we had our budget process last year. And really what we as a management team would like to do is, is we get through the election in November and we really get in depth with some tenure financial planning conversations and, and focus on our financial planning effort. And that way we're all speaking off of the same playbook, if you will, that, that we all utilize the same financial language going into the budget season. And, and then how do we want to structure our budget meetings? I, I think that you as a board always really enjoy hearing from our elected officials throughout the county as well as our departments. And, and that's always a good opportunity for you as a board to be able to, to connect with them. You'll hear their needs and it's incumbent upon us as a manager's office to hear all of those needs and then present a, a recommended budget to you, given our financial limitations, our financial circumstances, the, the state of the economy. Even now, you're probably hearing, if you're paying attention to the news, some, some rumblings about our economic condition. We've been talking about a recession for quite some time. It really hasn't happened. Interest rates are a bit high right now. There's talk of the feds pushing those down a bit. And we are a local government, but we also are a business in that way. And all of those economic conditions impact the revenues that we're, we're able to experience and, and develop a budget for services off of the, that financial condition. So we really want to start that process with you. And frankly, it's a pretty fun process because it really gets, enlightens all of us as to the financial conditions, gets us into that mindset. So we're all speaking off of the same playbook. Any thoughts on the budget process? We, we're happy to hear it.
Any board members, Supervisor Vasquez?
Still recovering, we just barely got over.
Absolutely. It's like an, it's, we always say, oh, it's budget season. Well, every month is now budget season, it seems.
The one thing I would say from, from last year, it was a little difficult as it was stretched on having, we wanted to have the meetings early, but without some of the numbers, it made it difficult when we came back to the numbers, remembering some of the presentations. And so while I really don't like doing two to three weeks in tents, in some ways that was better because at least all the information was fresh. So if there's a way to shorten it, but not so condensed, would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Vasquez. Supervisor Hess.
Yes, thank you. I've never heard anybody refer to the budget season as fun, so I'm glad we have Andy here for that. Yeah, I, I guess the biggest question is, and I know, when are you planning on starting this process? Are you just looking at prep for next year?
You know, so many things are incumbent on contingent upon the election on November 5th. And so our, the common conversation that we're all having is the expenditure limitation on November 5th. And that really gives us an opportunity to connect with services as well and be in tune with the services that we provide as a county. Into the new year, probably maybe, holiday season is always a bit difficult, right? But I, I think with a financial planning process, we can start that into the new year. And then hopefully that would then dovetail into a budget process. Because, because I think this past year, we, we, we were fortunate and we had groups come together and talk about the services that they provide. But in doing so, there wasn't really a conversation about numbers, right? Very few actually, here are the services that we provide. And then to Supervisor Vasquez's point, we get together and, and we condensed that into that number conversation. And so how do we sort of balance all of that out? Because unfortunately, services that we provide are great, but there's our numbers behind it. And, and that budget is the policy document that, that you as a board ultimately approve.
Yeah, the reason I ask that is because if you were going to start now, you'd have to do a parallel planning of with and without the expenditure limitation. So I think that, that's my main reason. Are we going to, are we going to push two budget kind of seasons at once? Or are we going to be able to push it off, like you said? And I think that's a smarter plan is to know the numbers we're working with. And then, as you and I talked about, I think the biggest thing we need is for at least your staff to get the prioritized list from each one of the sections. Because I think without that, if you don't know what their priorities are, you're, you're just guessing. And, and that's not what I think we want to do with this one. I think allow them to tell you what is most important and then, and then you guys give the guidance because it's all, it's all Monday, it's all money funded. So sometimes they're going to ask for the moon and you're going to say, hey, you get a trip to Disneyland instead. So I think that's it, prioritize within limits of reality. And then I think that will help you and us to understand when, when they come up here, what is it they are really looking to achieve? And what is the second thing that they're looking to achieve? Because sometimes we could do both, sometimes we can't do either. So I think that would be helpful for us to know what they want.
Thank you, Supervisor Hess. And the theme that we're hearing particularly in the first one, when he had started out, we went to the sheriff's office. And I'm actually hearing from Gregory right now at the County Managers Association. A huge theme right now is, is, was, was law enforcement, recruitment, retention, pay associated with that. And, and many counties actually have more vacancies than they do people in, in the, in the squad cars, right? And so that's been a huge factor that we've, and that's throughout the county and we're hearing that theme. And then, you know, some overarching themes in the organization. The cost of everything has gone up. We know that. How is that affecting our motor pool? How is that affecting our mechanical services fee structure? And that impacts everybody. At the same time, we want to look at hybrid vehicles and how we can transition to be able to do that. There's a strong push for the electric vehicle transition. And, and we know that there's a, there's a cost associated with that. And then the infrastructure throughout the county system that, a term has come to light that I've recently recognized, range anxiety. And do I have enough electricity in my vehicle to get from here to Fredonia and back again?
I don't know, but if, Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. And since the question was, I think, just in terms of process, and I'm sure we'll be talking about this more. I do agree with the con, the words, or the overview was from Supervisor Vasquez. And, you know, as much as I hate to say that, if we could somehow condense it down because it's important to hear from the different departments, but it's also important to talk about the numbers from the different departments. So we may have to go maybe to a two-week process. On the other hand, I really liked that it was presented in systems. I really like that because so many of our departments work together with other departments and really looking at it and having them look at it in a system-wide manner and as a system-wide budget, I thought really helped us and, and I thought ma, I thought brought us to better decision-making. So I'd like to continue to see that. And, and having said the, the fact that we do need to talk about numbers when the departments are talking about some of their needs, that doesn't prevent during the year to have departments come and basically talk about some of their successes. I, you know, that may then limit some of the time necessary for the budget process. So those are my thoughts in terms of the process. I know we have a lot of things to, to talk about and weigh in balance with regards to Sheriff's Department or whether it be electric vehicles or about a million other things that we're going to hear when we start going to the budget process. And I'm assuming the budget process isn't going to start in January. I hope I heard that wrong. And, and I'm assuming it will be as it usually is, you know, sometime in the spring. So anyway, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chair-Begay. Vice Chair Horstman, financial planning conversations, possibly at the beginning of the new year, just so we, we have some going into the budget process, some universal knowledge of the state of economic affairs locally and then throughout in national, state, federal and how that's impacting us locally. And so really getting, you know, some introduction into our financial planning model and how we speak off of that. And, and thank you for your comment on bringing people in groups. I, I think you'll hear a lot from me and I think employees are coming with, you know, people that might come with, here's my problem. What are you going to do to fix it? Well, what are we going to do to work together to address? And that's hugely important to me, that mindset of how we work together and how we work with departments to address a problem that may exist in the community and how we work together to address it. And, and that, that's what we need to focus on in the budget process.
Thank you. I think I like the system-wide also, that approach is something that we really need to continue looking at. And then also, the sooner the better, you know, getting information from the staff, you know, as to what their needs are and what their priorities are. And then also, I think we really need to, and the amount of time that we took this, the second, just this past one, I think that was the, you know, some, one of the things I really thought was good, not the one we did two, two years ago. I, so then also with, with the expenditure limit, you know, it's kind of, kind of be, going to be a little tough. But, you know, we're just, we don't want to be doing two budgets, you know. We like to, you know, stay focused on one and move forward with that. So I just want to say that, you know, the, 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 when we did just this past June, April, May, June, I think that, you know, that was pretty good, that process, the whole process was good for me.
Thank you, Chair-Begay. And I think it's worthy of note with the expenditure limitation, we're being asked, what if it doesn't pass? Well, if it's not passed, then we have to make some difficult decisions with our budgeting going forward. going forward.
Okay. Are we moving on?
We are moving on. The next items, I would actually recommend that we have Tuesday, the 13th meeting in the, the federal legislation, for example, and state legislation. Again, Gregory and Keith are at the County Managers Association and Prescott right now learning a lot about what other communities and counties are up to. And then we'll have a larger conversation with our state and federal contracted lobbyists. They will be here on Tuesday to address some agendas with you on, on those levels. So if it's okay with you, I, I would defer those until Tuesday unless you want to talk about some planning calendar items, et cetera.
If they're not here to do the presentation, then they'll probably share a lot with us, you know, the, the next, on Tuesday, the 13th.
Gregory's texting me all kinds of charts right now and so.
So we'll go ahead and wait for those on items number five and six till Tuesday. We'll defer that to that.
Thank you, Chair Begay.
Okay, that leaves seven and eight. Do you guys want to just break for lunch now?
We certainly can break for lunch. Please note, there's actually a potluck today, so well, well deserved at the end of this week with school starting, with pro-con statements due, with election canvassing, this expenditure limitation, and then preparation for Tuesday. It's been a hugely productive week.
And then we'll just have item seven and eight left after we come back from lunch and so.
Or, 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 yeah, we, we don't necessarily need to come back after lunch. If, I think we can possibly address these on Tuesday if you like.
Okay, we can do that. So we'll just adjourn.
Was the meeting adjourned? I'm sorry.
We are waiting for your motion to adjourn.
Very funny. Okay. Everybody have a good weekend. I'll see you next week.
Meeting adjourned at 11:31 PM, AM.
Thank you. Thanks.